Good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock and I would like to welcome everyone to this regular meeting of the Lansing School District. And we are virtual tonight per our governor's recommendation that everyone please stay home. Welcome from Grossbeck neighborhood in Lansing. Will everyone please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance Nail it, nail it guys. Thank you so much. Well, the quiz is called the roll.
Dr. Body. Dr. Burrows.
Here.
Ms. Hodgins.
Here.
Mrs. Lawrence.
Here.
Mrs. Lucy.
Here.
Mr. Lopez.
Present.
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Dr. Rodriguez.
Present.
And Mrs. Willis.
Present.
Borm is present.
Thank you very much. Any additions to the agenda this evening? Okay.
Yes, yes.
Yes, Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you very much. Report from the Policy Committee.
Okay. Okay, we will add that as number five under routine matters.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doc. Any other additions to the agenda this evening? Alrighty. Lynette, do we have any public comment this evening?
No ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much. Moving right along, we will start with our presentations this evening. The first up is the COVID Coordination Team. I believe that everyone has received in their board packet the presentation that we will be going through this evening. Sam, I don't know if you are giving an intro.
I would love to give an intro. We're welcoming Sue Wheeler and Becky Hoff. Welcome to two members of our COVID Coordination Team and do the presentation tonight. Take it away.
Thank you, Sam. Becky and I are here this evening to review the COVID metrics and the school outbreak data with you. So I'm going to share the screen. Well, as you know, cases have sharply increased in Michigan over the past month and we have maintained the designation of being number one in the nation for a number of new cases, cases per million, and highest positivity rates. Statewide hospitalizations have quadrupled in the past two weeks alone, including nearly 100 pediatric admissions for COVID or COVID-related issues. Our own Sparrow Hospital reports over 90% occupancy today. The data reflect a growing COVID crisis. In Ingham County, we're averaging 174 new cases per day, 55.7 cases per 100,000 population, and a soaring positivity rate of 16.6%. Our county data mirrors the state data, which you see here. Michigan's seven-day average of new cases is 8,727 with 72.4 cases per 100,000 and a positivity rate of 15.9. Today, Michigan's level was raised to severe, which is the highest level possible. We know this data is concerning, but how bad is it? So we thought it would be interesting to take a look from one year ago in March of 2020 to where we are today in April of 2021. March 10th of 2020, the first two cases of COVID were identified in the state. In February of '21, we were averaging 1,149 cases. And just two months later, we're averaging 8,727 cases in a seven-day period. This represents a sevenfold increase since February. Of course, in March of 2020, we had not yet begun to consider positivity rates or cases per million. Testing was not being done yet, and the metrics were just being developed. However, in February of '21, we see that the positivity rate was decreasing as expected. Recovery was occurring and we were hoping that we were on the light at the end of the tunnel, that we were nearing the end of COVID. Unfortunately, by mid-April, we are back to surging positivity rates and entering what experts are calling the fourth wave for Michigan. The Ingham County data trends also reflect an exponential growth in new cases, cases per 100,000, and rising positivity rates. We have tripled or quadrupled our numbers in each category over the past two months. So the explanation for this surge is complicated. Most experts attribute our crisis and rise in cases to five factors. The first being that we are being severely impacted by the new variant forms of COVID, which are accounting for more than 60% of all new cases in Michigan. Michigan reopened many public spaces. Early March, we saw restaurants, bars, recreational facilities, and more reopened or partially opened with a surge in participation. The third factor is Michigan has long had low adherence to mask-wearing and social distancing. Even after a year, we still struggle with getting people to wear the mask and social distance. The fourth is our vaccination program, which is underway, but still less than about 20% of the population are immunized, so we still have a ways to go there. And the fifth factor is multiple schools have returned to in-person learning with a resultant surge in school-related outbreaks. Becky is now going to speak to you about the school-related outbreaks.
Thank you, Sue. Good evening. So what is a school outbreak? A school outbreak is declared when two or more people from separate households test positive for COVID-19 and have shared an exposure either at school or at a school event. All such cases are reported to the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services weekly. And a record of those cumulative cases for the last 28 days is posted on the MDHHS website and can also be found on the school district website under the COVID-19 update tab. So, since March 15th, Michigan has seen a 30% increase of COVID-19 outbreaks in both middle and high schools and a 23% increase in the elementary outbreaks. Unfortunately, these cases are under-reported and often delayed due to the time required to complete the contact tracing or the lack of available contact tracers and other factors. The MDHHS does report that schools and associated sports teams are now the largest super-spreaders for COVID, overtaking long-term healthcare facilities and restaurants. This was evident with Michigan High School Athletic Association reporting that more than 100 teams withdrew from the state playoffs since March 15th due to COVID-19. So what can we do to reduce the risk? While we navigate this crisis, we must ask ourselves again, what can we do to reduce the risk of transmitting COVID-19? We encourage a continual monitoring of the metrics. We are in Level E, or the severe risk category, which Sue mentioned at this time. We must maintain vigilance with our mitigation strategies, wear a mask correctly and consistently, maintain six feet of distance from each other, wash our hands frequently and thoroughly, and provide well-ventilated spaces outdoor if at all possible. We encourage vaccination and mitigation, and once vaccinated, people should continue to wear a mask, distance, and continue with handwashing. All district employees are required to complete the My Symptoms health screener daily before entering any of the school district buildings. We provide administrative oversight with school walkthroughs and assessment of applied mitigation strategies, such as the SOAR program walkthroughs that were completed before spring break. And we continue to participate in the antigen testing program for the high school sports teams, and this helps us identify positive cases quickly and efficiently. And finally, patience. Patience with mitigation strategies, patience with program delays and postponing of in-person group gatherings and events until this current surge of COVID-19 is behind us. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions that I believe should be, probably would be addressed by Sam. Sam, can you briefly talk about, do we have teachers who are working from home, from school, or both?
I would say the answer to that is both. Mostly from home, a large percentage of them are. It's, you know, it's, some have gotten used to it now, others have felt really comfortable teaching, would rather be teaching in the rooms, but we've been very careful and very precise in saying, if you do that, there are certain rules you have to follow and whether that's wearing a mask, staying six feet away, you know, all the types of things that Sue and Becky have talked about and the other nurses. So, yeah, but the answer to that is both.
Okay. And can you, I'm going to preface this by saying, I think there's been some confusion about whether or not the district is participating in athletics. We are participating in athletics at this time. Sam, can you briefly talk about the testing that we've done with kids who are participating in athletics and the rate of positive test results that we've had?
I may defer to Sue, but I know we did antigen testing on Monday and I'm trying to remember the figure, Sue. Was it about 3% maybe that were positive?
Not, I think there were three students.
Oh, three students.
So before you talk about that, could you tell some of us who might not know what antigen testing is?
Yes.
I don't know what it is. I don't know what it is.
The test that they are using for the sports teams, this is a rapid test that if this, it tells, if we suspect a student has COVID, this will say your body's beginning to respond or appear as though you have COVID. If this rapid, quick screener kind of test comes back positive, then that student is immediately sent for what's called the PCR test or the test that you hear more about. You know, the one that takes a little bit longer to do and we can identify if they in fact are positive for COVID. So this is more of a screener, you know, are the antigens in their body that say they are developing COVID.
Okay. And you said we did that on Monday?
Yes, on Monday at all the high schools. And this is done weekly. They have a nice program set up that they have two days, the teams are divided, so we get a nice flow-through. The students come in and have no contact with the other students and we can have the results quickly in just a few minutes. And then in that test on Monday, we did identify a student who was positive and that student was then sent for the PCR test.
So we had one, only one student test positive for antigens?
Through the antigen program, yes. We did have other students that tested positive this week, other athletes that were through the PCR tests. Yeah.
So, how many antigens, do you know how many antigens tests were performed?
I, I am sorry, I don't know.
I think, I think I know that one. I think it was 162.
Yeah.
152, I was close. Thank you, Cordelia.
152, we only had one test positive. So, in my mind, and Cordelia assumes too, anyone correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's a success. And I know that we've all heard a lot of stories from a lot of districts about these outbreaks on their sports teams and how it very quickly spreads throughout the entire community. And next thing you know, you have people who are tested positive because they went to the basketball game. I want to give our students so much credit for following the rules and being safe. Because I think, I think our students see our track record and they know if, if we don't think it's safe for them, we will protect them and we will make decisions to do what we need to do in order to protect their health and safety. I want to give a lot of kudos to our athletes in particular for making sure that they're doing the right thing and they're keeping themselves healthy. Thank you very much. That's all my questions. I'll go to Dr. Rodriguez.
Yeah.
Thank you. I have a question about the learning labs that we have. How all these changes in the last few weeks influence the learning labs and how we see the future of this learning labs in the district?
I'll start and then I'm going to turn it over to Sergio. Sue can double-team this, but we have had some situations where students have tested positive and some of the staff have. Sergio, go ahead.
Yes, good evening. I'm not sure how much details I can give, but we have one learning lab right now that is closed until Monday. And we have another learning lab, that one group, one of the bubbles, about seven kids. The instructor tested positive on Monday, so we are monitoring that group of kids too.
Yeah. We've had several positive cases throughout the learning labs since, you know, over the past year. And those are handled really with very similar protocol that the district uses. We do the quarantine periods, the monitoring, and try to get kids back in as soon as we can. But we have had multiple cases throughout the year.
Dr. Rodriguez, any other questions?
No, yes, I am concerned about how is going to be the future of the learning labs. Are we going to keep the one we have? Is we are going to just wait and see what is going on? Because I think that many families are calling and they are happy with them, but the situation that you just showed to us is, is, and we have to be careful.
We have had several learning labs and have spoken with Mr. Kek about continuing through the summer. So we will sit down and think about that and analyze that and come up with a response for them.
Thank you. Mrs. Moore?
Yes, I just have a question. When our students test positive for COVID, do we follow up with them and their family? I was wondering what that looks like.
Yes, we do. When, I'm sure there are cases we may not be notified of, but especially with our athletes, students that are at school. Anytime we identify a student that's positive, the COVID Coordination Team nurse will call and we connect with them. We get information about contact tracing, we give them referrals. And then usually about two days later, we call and check back in with them, see how the student is doing, if they've had access to healthcare, or what other supports the district could offer.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sue, Becky, and I see Mary Beth's here too. I want to make sure you thank your team for all the work they've done these past months. It's much appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
You will have other members to discuss. Moving on to our next presentation this evening, that will be on the Lansing Promise program, and we have with us tonight Dustin Sheehan and Kelly Dean.
It is my pleasure to, I want to, I want to say we have Justin Sheehan, who is Executive Director of the Pathway Promise. And then we also have Kelly Dean, who is the executive, executive director of whatever he wants to be. So Kelly is well-known in our community, has worked tirelessly for the schools and the Pathway Promise. So Justin and Sheehan, or Justin and Kelly, take it away.
Thank you, Superintendent. I will start. Good evening, everyone. I'm Kelly Dean and very, very honored to be here tonight. I am the front person to introduce you to Mr. Dustin Sheehan, our Executive Director, and I'm very proud to do this. I do want to just say that many of you are familiar with the promise and the development over the last few years of the Pathway Promise and the significance that it is here to the Lansing School District and our community. And so just a couple introductory remarks, you know, why would I want to serve as the Chair of the Lansing Promise? Well, I have had many opportunities in my years here in Lansing. Nothing has been more impactful or what I believe can change the lives of Lansing kids than the Lansing Promise. And I'm hoping that there are many parents that are, that are visiting tonight virtually. And if they haven't heard about the promise, hopefully we can share a few thoughts. My great interest in this program, you know, starts back when the Lansing School District allowed me my very first professional job, and that was as a parapro at Beakman Center. I followed that up by finishing my training at Michigan State. I continued to teach within the Lansing School District and in special education, also was a school administrator. And I didn't know there would predict that, that I would become involved in school transportation and now the provider, proud to provide the transportation for the Lansing School District. And so right now, I'm a, I'm a school transportation person in waiting, ready for the word when you say go. So we're standing ready. I'd like to just remind everybody that the Lansing Promise was, was a group of volunteers, nine of them were commissioned in 2009. I'm one of the founders of, at that time, the Lansing School Board in 2009 established the Lansing Promise along with really nine other urban cities across Michigan, really to make a difference. And, and we believe that it is across the state of Michigan and true here in Lansing. Our first scholarships were given out in 2012. That first class had 80 Promise Scholars there. And from that first scholarship to where we are today, we've been able to fulfill every single promise. The Authority Board at that time established a separate nonprofit foundation. So there are really two organizations that work very well together. The nonprofit organization is helping us to raise private funds, private money from individuals and corporations here in our community, those that have helped to support it. To date, the Lansing Promise has, a foundation board has raised $3.3 million on behalf of the Lansing School District. And we are fastly approaching, 2,000 students have been impacted through the promise. I want to point out to you that one year ago, we had some very significant concerns when we were in our first part of the pandemic shutdown, the graduation class of 2020. I personally was extremely concerned and worried as to how that, that year would work. But thanks to you, the board, all of you, the administrative leaders in the district, the teachers, the counselors and everyone, we had a record class of 360 graduates apply and accepted Lansing Promise scholarships in 2020. We hope for the same of this year during these really unusual times. And for, for those that don't know, our students are attending Lansing Community College, fully paid scholarships, and also equal to Michigan State University and Olivet College. So, so we have a lot to be grateful and thankful for in our success. A great part of our success really started about six years ago when we reached the point that we could hire an executive director. And that director is Mr. Justin Sheehan. Justin was one of 50 applicants interested in this role. It was very difficult, but boy, did we pick the right person. Justin's a lifelong Lansing resident. He has his own children in the Lansing School District. He's, he's proud of his community and works passionately on behalf of many causes, particularly those of social justice and what we can change and do here through education. Justin is a College of Social Science, Michigan State College of Social Science graduate with a degree in social work. And he's also a graduate of the Michigan State School of Law. He comes with great credentials. I'm very proud to say on behalf of the board, and we have two of our Lansing Promise Board members here on the Lansing School Board, Dr. Nino Rodriguez and Mr. Guillermo Lopez, who have been very, very significantly active members on the Promise Board. We recently have agreed to a new long-term contract with Justin. So he will be our Executive Director through 2024, and we're very pleased. Justin, as I introduce him, we've asked him to kind of share his vision as our Executive Director, as he's helping to mold the next five-plus years on what the promise could do here within the Lansing School District, our Lansing community, and as a presentation for him tonight, I, for all of us tonight. So as, as the volunteer chair, along with many other great volunteers that are, that are working on behalf, we're very fortunate to have Justin. And I think you'll see after you have the opportunity to hear his vision. So without further ado, Justin, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, Kelly, thank you. Thank you, President Lawrence, esteemed Board of Education. Thank you, Superintendent Sinicropi. And really to all of the hard work, and Kelly already said it, the hard-working teachers and staff and administrators and counselors who make this stuff work every day. The reality is if you all are not doing what you do, there is no scholarship and no promise. And yet you all have made sure that our kids continue to exceed expectations. Now, the board members, as Kelly has mentioned, Guillermo and Nino, you guys have seen this twice already, but third time's the charm. And I was informed, I should shorten it a little bit. So I took 30 slides out because I love you all. But it's, it's still going to move, move quick. All right, I'm going to share my screen briefly. Give me one minute and we will have this up and running. Here's what we know. Long story short, we believe in the inherent value and worth of every young person in this city and in this community, and we invest accordingly. As Kelly said, this is a scholarship program, but, but it is something, something more. Because we imagine a community where every young person has that opportunity to dream, right, and to dream big. Right, that ability to thrive and the love, support, and investment needed to build a brighter future. And that's for themselves, that's for their family, and that's for their community. And so as we, as we look at the dreams of our young people, and we begin to look at what is it they could be, right, when they begin to find their why, when they have a million dreams and begin to look through even some of this college and career readiness work that is happening through the Pathway Promise. They're engaging at every level, at every grade, and they're really beginning to express who they are and what they will become. And what that means as they dream is that we, as a community, actually have a responsibility to invest strategically and effectively through scholarships and what we call strategic readiness and completion initiatives to support those Promise Scholars, both current Promise Scholars and of course our 10,500 future Promise Scholars. Now, for those that don't know, those playing at home and those on the board, we're going to do a quick refresh of Promise 101. This is what the promise is to a degree on the scholarship and logistics end. We call it a place-based scholarship, providing access to last dollar scholarship assistance for all eligible high school graduates. What do we mean by that? Place-based, and we'll talk about it in a minute, is the Lansing School District boundaries. If you are in Lansing, you are already one step closer to being eligible. Last dollar means that number one, we are a blue-collar city. We got to use every dollar possible. So state and federal aid go first and we come into film. and we come in to fill in the tuition gaps. Even within doing that, last year, we filled in $664,000 worth of tuition gaps, leveraging something between four and seven times the amount of state and federal aid as we paid in. In other words, every dollar that goes in, it's a multiplier of about $5 to go out. But to be honest, this isn't really about money, right? This is about momentum, right? The scholarship is not a full ride of everything. And, and we've never, we've never said it was, but I can tell you this. The more kids that use it, the more kids we see succeed, and more importantly, the more times that they grab their friends and bring them along. And so, we'll talk about that a little bit. Live, live within the Lansing School District boundaries. In this case, it's from ninth through twelfth grade. So, if you live within the Lansing School District boundaries, again, for those playing at home, you would look at your tax statement. If you pay taxes to the city of Lansing, or you are within the Lansing School District, District, then you'd, you'd count ninth through twelfth grade. You must attend a school within those boundaries, ninth through twelfth grade. And then graduate, graduate from a school within those boundaries. Live, attend, and graduate. Now, within one year, we're also going to ask that you apply for a scholarship. Typically, we're having our students apply senior year. Now, when I say "we," what I really mean is the counselors. I really mean the pathfinders, I mean the navigators, I mean the teachers, I mean the principals, I mean families, I mean parents, I mean College Access Network, I mean Lansing Community College, I mean MSU, I mean Olivet. Now, why did I just list all those people? Because every single one of those people have come together under one goal, which is to make sure that our young people can navigate the process of the FAFSA, which if any of you have read that recently, whoo, as an attorney of ten years, that intimidates me. So, we have folks that can navigate that process. So, any parents, right, reach out to your principal, to your pathfinder, to your counselor, to the college advisor, and, and make sure that, that our kids are never walking alone and that they can walk through it. So, they need to apply to the Promise within one year. Now, there are exceptions to that. We've had students who have had to take care of business, have had to do a little bit of work and have had to take care of family, have had medical concerns, have had kids, whatever it is, have, be sure to give us a call. Because the reality is, we are not trying to administer students out of scholarships. We are trying to administer them into their successful futures. And so, we always want to make sure that we're meeting our students where they're at, but we do want them to keep momentum moving forward, and we think that's important. Now, they have a four-year window to use it. Once they've been accepted, they have a four-year window to earn up to sixty-five credits at LCC, which is an associate's degree. Or, they can take that sixty-five dollars, or sixty-five credits, which is about $6,500. They can take that money and move it over to MSU or Olivet for the first two years. And again, as, as those who have paid some of those bills know, that ain't a full ride, but it's a good start. And the reality is, we don't want kids getting scared about the, the upfront bill because we have partners at MSU, we have partners at Olivet, and we have partners at LCC that are going to work to make sure that college or a skilled or licensed trade, a professional trade, a certificate is affordable. And maybe it'll be free, and maybe it won't. But sometimes investment's okay, and so, we're going to, we're going to make sure that you have what you need to the degree that we can. So, that's, that's a scholarship in a nutshell. But let's really get down to the, to the heart. Here's Promise snapshots. 1,467, that is the number of confirmed students who have set foot on a college campus since 2012 through the Lansing Promise. That's pretty good. We expect to double that in the next five years. And then, we expect to double that again even quicker. Because we will not rest until every single one of our students in Lansing, as far as we're concerned, is moving forward in their career. Now, that doesn't mean that they have to go to a four-year. If they want to go to a four-year, that's great. But if they want to get into some kind of contracting, if they want to get into be a licensed electrician, they want to go through a journeyman's program, we're working with those folks now. LCC has some great plans, right? Actually, it was even mentioned earlier, the Fire Academy, we certainly support that. In fact, we got to buy some pizza for them, one of these weekends when they were working real hard, breaking down some materials and really learning things, right? We want to see success after high school, and that's going to look different for everybody. But we expect success after high school, and we're going to try to do anything we can to make sure that happens. Three hundred plus. That's an important number because we have 1,467. This is our expected number of graduates that we believe will apply by the time we're done. The reason I say "we believe" is because we still have an open window of two more weeks. And in our experience, the last two weeks bring a whole lot of scholars, so keep an eye out for that. One thousand plus, well, that's an important one because actually, that one thousand plus is the number of students still in their first four years of eligibility. That's a lot of kids. Here's another one where three hundred plus is significant. That's the number of confirmed certificates, degrees, and completions that we've seen so far. And let's just say this, we don't report unless we've confirmed. And so, actually, there's many more out there that are coming, including these one thousand plus. Thirty thousand plus, and this is a very conservative number that we've received, are the number of credits our scholars have earned toward their degrees, certificates, and careers. And that just continues to grow. Three hundred and fifty-five, as, as Kelly mentioned, was the number last year of students that applied. Recognize that is well over fifty percent of the graduating class. Now, what that also doesn't include, and we got to remember this, if students go to that one school in Ann Arbor, they usually don't apply to the Promise. Now, we encourage them to, right? Just to make sure if they, if they want to come back at all, want to come back home, we're good for it. But Eastern, Central, Grand Valley, Western, Northern, technically, we don't cover those schools within ours because we do MSU, LCC, and Olivet. But it turns out, when kids go there, that's still considered success, right? All we want to do is make sure the momentum is moving for everyone. Since the beginning, this is a three hundred and fifty percent increase from our very first class. We're happy about that number. We want it to continue. We did hit a milestone a while back, actually about a year and a half ago. But it's still an important one. That was our thousandth scholar, which, which a couple of guys that folks may recognize on the screen were able to, her name is Paris. They were able to accept. She was on the Everett Dance Team. She's kicking butt and taking names. But that was a pretty significant milestone. Because a thousand scholars in, but think about it, we already hit almost 500 in the last year and a half. So, we're on a big upswing. As Kelly mentioned, 3.3 million. And again, that, that's essentially private and some tax capture dollars. We can go through the whole tax capture piece at another meeting. I'm glad to break it all down. We can do all the projections and how they calculated it. But long story short, we're working to build success and sustainability. But 3.3 million, that's a good start. We're going to continue to grow. We need every dollar we can, but more importantly, we're going to support every scholar, period. We're never going to break a promise. Retention and persistence rates, here's some good news. What we've heard from MSU and from LCC and from Olivet is that our kids are persisting, and they are retaining. More accurately, MSU in particular, let us know that our kids are persisting past any of the state averages and about thirty percent beyond national average. We're like a ninety-seven-plus percent retention and persistence, persistence rate for the first two years, which is unheard of. But what does that mean? Number one, Lansing teachers, good work. Keep doing that. You're preparing our kids well. That's important. Number two, we're learning that our kids work hard. We're also digging in quite a bit with a lot of our post-secondary partners and actually, Promise programs across the country. There are several hundred of them now, to talk about what are the success factors that Promise programs can begin to support. What, what a lot of the research is coming out now indicating is that one of the number-one factors for success is not academics, and it's not even financial. Those are both important. It's a sense of belonging. And that's really where MSU, LCC, and Olivet are all beginning to say there is a sense of belonging being built through the Promise Scholarship to a degree. But the question we're asking now is, how do we reinforce that even more so? So, not only once they get there, they know they belong, but how, when do, how do we make sure our kindergartners know that they belong? And so, that's really going to be the, the next step and really the next piece of this whole chapter of the Promise. So, we do know, good news, it is working. But of course, to accomplish great things, we must not only act, but also dream, not plan, but also believe. And so, here's some of our fundamental understandings. And we're going to, we're going to marinate on a quote for just a minute. No, we're going to hold that one for a minute. Let's understand belief for a second. "So, the Promise was born of a simple belief in this inherent value and worth of every young person in this city. It's also a belief that education transforms and changes lives, that a belief in community could in fact breathe life and encouragement and hope into the lives of its young people. And, and in breathing that hope and life and encouragement, then in fact, we could raise real hope and ultimately, real expectations for every one of our young people and also every one of us." Right? Which leads us to expectation. There's an author by the name of Westmore, and I'll show his quote in a second. He's an education advocate. He is an incredible author. He's a Rhodes Scholar. He's a veteran, an exceptional man, works on the East Coast, doing incredible work for first-gen students and, and more importantly, just for education access in general. And he said this, "Prisons and colleges are both filled with people who lived up to expectations." And so, we'll let that sit in for a minute. Prisons and colleges are both filled with people who lived up to expectations. So, this is where, as Kelly mentioned, we're going to get a little social work here for a second because we need to understand something as a community. That internal dialogues of young minds are shaped every day by the community in which they live, the adults who speak into their lives, and the examples they see of success, struggle, and of resilience. And of course, shaped by the expectations of family, of neighbors, of business owners, of elected officials, community members, police officers, teachers, board members, and adults that our young people have not even formally met yet, but have seen speak, have seen act, have shaken hands, have looked in the eye, and ultimately, adults who have told our young people that they matter, that they are loved, and that they are worthy. Right? And that we are walking with them. Because Westmore, in a book called The Other Westmore, made another important statement. But now, this was not the Westmore the author. Westmore the author met a man named Westmore from the same neighborhood, same demographics, single mom, grew up in the same type of neighborhood. I want to say it was in Baltimore. It, it was a rough spot. There were a lot of risk factors, as we might call it. In the same newspaper, Westmore the author was being noted as a Rhodes Scholar. And the other Westmore was being locked up for felony murder. Westmore the author reached out to Westmore then doing some time. They built a, a strong relationship, and they, they met on a regular basis and began to interview. Westmore the author asked Westmore then doing time, said, "Wes, are we products of our environment?" And Wes very wisely stated, "We're not products of our environment, we're products of our expectations." There's a statement that we say every time we see our kids, every time, but especially during a thing called the Promise Pledges, which Terry Bernero, Director of the Pathway Promise, does a phenomenal job pulling together along with principals and teachers and counselors and her pathfinders and her navigators, this whole incredible infrastructure that's been built around college and career readiness. She pulls it together so that we can get all of our sixth graders together, and we'll do it in May, so keep an eye out. I'm sure you'll get invites. We'll make sure you do. But we do it in May. We get kids together. We normally did it in eleven different schools. All the sixth graders and fifth graders would kind of sit in the back, kind of, and parents get in because we want to talk about the Promise and kids' futures, right? And we want to get them excited. And the statements we always tell them are very clear. We say, "What you do matters, and who you are matters, and who you become matters." And now, we don't just say that because nothing like an old white guy to just come in and say those things. We make sure the kids yell it back, right? It's a calm response, "What you do matters," and it starts ringing. And "Who you are matters, and who you become matters." And every time we do it, it gets loud and it gets boisterous, and the kids are excited. And mostly, they're excited because they get to yell, right? And their teachers are okay with it, and their parents are okay with it. And then, we always ask the question, "Matters to who?" And there's always a brave little boy or brave little girl who says to my mom, to my grandma, to my dad, to my auntie, to my brother, to my sister, to my cousin, to my pastor, to my neighbor. Because when kids begin to understand there's a community that cares for them, it's an amazing thing, they get to turn around and care for another, right? But the reality is, we are living in more than seventy percent free and reduced lunch in this city, which means we as a community, this is not a reflection of the school district, by the way. That means we as a community are comfortable with our young people at seventy percent free and reduced lunch, which means there are financial risk factors that we all face. And so, this is much more of a community call to action than a district call to action because I'm going to tell you guys, y'all are doing your jobs. Understand that I, I come from the community side, that I speak on behalf of the community, that we've got more to do. Now, we're going to work in partnership with you hand in hand, but we've got more to do. Right? So, all of this to say, why? Why are we talking about this? Why is Sheehan going on and on? Why are we building a promise? And these babies are the answer, right? Kelly mentioned, I have two in the district. I've got one actually that just got accepted. He's starting kindergarten at Wexford as well. So, South Side, I'm sorry. Kindergarten teachers, good luck. Good luck. We're really excited. We love this city, born and raised, and there are many folks that do. Now, we're going to attempt in this next slide to play a video. I'm going to need a couple of heads to see if the sound comes through. And if it doesn't, I will skip it and I will send it to you all for notes afterwards. If it does come through, understand this, I can sit here and talk all day about the dreams of our kids and what we believe. But if, if we are able to hear from them, it's always better. So, here we go. We're going to try. Let me know.
Justin, should there be sound?
No sound.
No sound, nooo. All right. Sorry, folks. I just learned there's no sound. Oh, my goodness. Let me try one more time because I'm telling you, y'all got to hear this. And I'm just smiling here, listening to it myself, being myself. So, sorry, guys. Give me one minute. We're going to figure this out.
Now, it may not be perfect, but tell me if it comes through.
Hello, Bailey.
My name is Santiago Channing.
My name is Lana Gomez.
I'm Yuna Shay Omar.
My name is Abni Plato.
My name is Jalen Sanders.
I'm Aiden Yang.
My name is Paris Leek.
My name is Sienna Wood.
Yeah, my name is Nerdi Musa, and I go to here at Eastern High School, and I'm a senior.
I'm in eighth grade.
I'm in eleventh grade.
I'm a senior.
I'm a senior at Eastern High School.
I'm a senior at Everett High School.
And I'm in the seventh grade.
I am an eleventh grader at JW Sexton High School.
I like studying everything, basically.
I like how, like, supportive everybody is, how, how they have hard classes to help me prepare for college. Plan on attending LCC this coming up fall.
I plan on going to college, becoming a doctor.
I will be attending MSU to study psychology and criminal justice.
I really know what, what to do, but it has to do with music.
I don't know anything that matters.
I'm still deciding on what college I want to go to, but I want to go to a film school.
I plan on attending LCC, and I'm going to take my basic courses at first before I decide my major.
After I graduate, I plan on attending LCC for my two years, then transfer to a university so I can get my bachelor's, so I want to become a teacher.
I want to get a master's in both computer science and biology.
And I will be a Promise Scholar.
Take on the world headfirst.
You just go to college, like, succeed from there, and you could go on from there.
Have something to hope for.
I believe that I can pursue what I want to do, and I can be happy.
For me, it's to go to college and be like the first-generation student. It's really exciting and scary at the same time.
Sometimes you're going to hit that brick wall, and having people believe in you will just help you go over obstacles and, and be a better person as well.
A lot of good teachers.
My mom?
Yeah, she believes tremendously in me.
My mother and my father believe in me.
My parents most definitely because they had the courage to come to America first.
My cousins, my deaundeals, like, everybody who believes.
It could be like a person out on the street, just a good hello, just helped out my day too as well.
Helps a lot.
Stay in school, work hard, and never give up.
I believe in that failure is okay, but like, trying is like the most important thing in life.
I believe that students have the power to do extraordinary things if they have a community and a group of people around them that support them.
We are dreamers. We are people who want to change the world.
Lansing Promise has your back, so I'm really happy for that, knowing that they believe in me.
To all those who supported the Promise Scholarship, thank you.
I would like to thank you, you know, for the belief, even though you don't know me.
Good people make a good community.
Yes, sir.
I believe in community.
So, tho, those kids are remarkable. Those are several of 10,500 kids who will do remarkable things. The question is, what will it take? And, and you at the Board level know this, it will take you. You at the staff level know this, it will take you. Uh, you at the staff level know this, it will take you. Uh, you listening to this who are parents and grandparents and family. And family by choice and neighbors and business leaders. It will take you. And it will take me. And it will take the district. It will take our teachers. It will take our city. It'll take our chamber and our entire business community. It'll take Lansing Community College. It'll take MSU. It'll take all of that. And of course. It will take community. But in many ways, understand that we are just creating the conditions for success to occur. Cause the reality is our kids are going to be successful. The question is, are we going to be a part of that success? We have the privilege of doing so. You all at the board continue to lead in incredible ways. Understand that we as a community completely support what you are doing. Uh, and we will continue to walk in every way possible uh, that we can. We have the promise, I think Kelly can attest to this, uh, we will not stop pushing for this work. We will not stop fighting for these kids. We know you won't. And understand this, over the last five, almost six years now, I've had more conversations with CEOs, business leaders, grandmas. Parents, business owners. And coffee shop owners in particular. Uh. All who are ready. To roll with this thing till the wheels fall off. So our kids are going to be taken care of. We just got to keep doing the work. Uh, but thank you, uh, board for your continued leadership. Uh, and here is the call to action to all community members watching this. Join us. Go to lansingpromise.org, go to Lansing School District uh, website, wherever you need to be to get involved. Thanks folks.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you. Nice job. Uh. Uh, Sam, back to you, uh, introduction. Uh, are there any questions or any further uh? Uh, information that we can share this evening?
Dr. Rodriguez.
I found a new one. You got it, Nina. It's hiding.
Ruth.
There you go.
Hey.
You got it.
Hey. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And I know that was a short presentation. Compared with the other one you had the other day. And like, um, I think the board of education needs to know and also the administration, all the members, they are part of the. Of the promise and the uh, and also the foundation. You know, we had Mr. Dean and you here today, but I know is vice president, secretary and everything for the both organizations. And we are about 27 or 25. That will be good to send the names and the organization. They are part. Of the whole group. They are doing the work day in and day out. And I think we need, we need to have these names. And congratulate them and their organization for for all of this. And that takes a lot of work from your part, uh, from Mr. Dean part. And the second is um. The the system that we have in Lansing with Terry Bernero and the system and LCC supporting our students when they are arriving there. Then thank you both of you, but I think the sending to us the names and all this then we connect. And also some of the activities that you are going to have this year, that we maybe can participate in some of them. That will be also great. Thank you.
Justin, if you'd send those to, if you'd send those to Lynette, we can get them out to all the board members.
I will send those to Lynette.
Thank you, Doc. Mrs. Moore.
I just want to introduce myself. Um, my name is Robin Moore and I'm a newly elected board member. And it was, it is an honor to see your presentation, Justin and and Mr. Dean. I want to say that my daughter was in the first cohort of the Lansing Promise. She went off to Michigan State, received her bachelor's and she's an admissions counselor at Michigan State. And she is working, um, she's in a grad program um, in higher education and I want to say kudos to the work. Um, you all were speaking my language. I'll say that. And I also work at Lansing Community College. So I I'm just, I am. I am just, um. I'm overjoyed. That's all I can say. The great work that you're doing. Our kids matter. And and everything that you're doing is making a difference. So I want to say keep up the good work. I even saw my little cousin in the presentation. So and she would probably say, I'm, I'm gonna be proud, my TT is gonna be proud of me. So, um, I'm that person. So thank you again for sharing tonight. And um, I just appreciate the work that you all are doing. Thank you, Madam President, for the time to speak.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. Uh, I remember the last promise dinner that we had at the Don Johnson Field House and. Gosh, does everybody remember what an amazing event that was? That that night was just electric. And I saw like everyone I knew at that event. And honestly, a lot of my friends do not live in the city of Lansing. But they were all there that night. And my husband and I kept talking about how. Look at all of our friends. Look at all of these people. They don't live here, but they cannot wait to open their checkbooks to support this cause. And then we started talking about how to get people to move into the district, but that's a different discussion for a different day. Um, but I can't wait to be able to get together like that in person again. Um. Justin, thank you so much for playing that video. That just, I always. Am reluctant to see Justin's presentation because I know it's going to make me emotional. Um, but but thank you so much for bringing that. It's so wonderful to see that. And Mr. Dean, I know you mentioned that you just entered into a new contract with Justin. Um. Thanks for doing that because Justin, you're, you're incredible and we are so lucky to have you on our team. Um, so thank you both.
I said I wouldn't cry and now all of a sudden this getting emotional. This is a board of education meeting, people. Let's keep it.
It it's just, those kids are so. I don't know. They're just, they're cool. I I always, I just think they look so much cooler than I did when I was in high school and I. I think so. It's so cool to see them so fired up and excited for their future. And I just really appreciate. Seeing that and appreciate both of you being here and all the work that you do for our community. Any other questions from board members? Okay. Again, thank you so much for being here this evening and here's hoping we can actually see each other soon.
We look, look forward to that. Thank you, Madam President. We appreciate the opportunity and that. I'd, I'd want to conclude by saying about a month ago, I went to get an eye exam. I see several folks here probably have regular eye exams and uh. It was at Lansing ophthalmology and this beautiful young girl uh, was giving me the eye test. I had read E, F, G, H, all that. Everybody's done it a hundred times. So uh, I said to her, I said, well. You know what? Do you go to school? What are you doing beyond this job? She's, oh yeah, I'm uh, I'm studying biology at Lansing Community College. I said, how wonderful. And uh, I said, well, what are your plans? She said, I'm going to be a doctor. Very clear. I'm going to be a doctor. I said, how, I said, well, you know, I don't want to be too uh, intrusive, but you know, where, where are you from? Where'd you go to school? I'm a Lansing Eastern graduate. And she said, really? I said, that is just wonderful. So uh, and I, and I took the leap and I said. Uh, have you ever heard of the Lansing Promise? She said, I heard of Lansing Promise. I'm a promise scholar. And they're, and they're paying for my entire Lansing Community College time. So you think I wasn't proud sitting in that chair and uh. And so uh, this young girl will, she will be a doctor and she was so motivated and so positive and pleasant. So uh. We're going to figure out how to get her in the next video because she's got a great story. So. Well, we thank you uh, for all of your leadership and all the challenges. Uh, you know, um, you have a heck of a. You have just tough decisions to make every day as we all, as you work through this pandemic and as as we do too. And so. Uh, we're hopefully get it, get a big class of graduates this year and uh, we'll do our best to help them get to the next step. So thank you also very much and thank you, Justin, for your presentation.
Thank you all.
Thanks, guys. Good to see you. Fun's over. Moving on to our budget amendment. Woo! Sam.
Yeah, really. I want to thank Kelly and Justin again. It was great and it's good seeing you guys always and we do appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
Yeah, now, now for the fun stuff. Okay, uh, budget amendment two, you have it in your packet. Uh, I've got uh, John Lang and Kim Adams here and uh. We are going to be talking about budget quite a lot now in the next, so probably through June, mid-June anyway. Um, we're not going to talk a lot about ESRS funding tonight, although that's going to be part of the budget for next year. But we'll wait and talk more about that when we get to that, when we get to budget for FY22. Uh, John and Kim have uh, put together a short PowerPoint and I'm going to get out of the way right now.
Yeah. Thanks, Sam. Yes, emphasis on short. I got seven slides, uh, Justin, in case you're still on, you know. So. Uh, but it's still fun, of course, obviously. So uh, just a reminder of where we were uh, at the last budget amendment back in January. Uh, our fund balance was around 10.5 million projected. And with what you'll see is we'll be up to around 13 million and adding about two and a half million to the, to the uh, fund balance. Um, and uh, as Sam mentioned, uh, as far as the S R funds. Um, based on when we have to start preparing these documents, documents, um. And by we, I say, I mean, Kim Adams, she does the bulk of this work. Uh, is that uh, these are as of the end of February. So. Um, there's a lot still to be known and released as far as the S R information. So uh, none of this reflects any of the S R funds. Uh, in case you did not know, part of the S R two funds were um, approved by the state. And um, those applications are due to the state by uh, 23rd, next week, April 23rd. And we are still waiting to hear about the rest of the S R funds and then S R three funds too. So. Um, without further ado, so changes in the revenue, we had some reductions in the property taxes and athletics and Eversol revenues. And that primarily is recognizing. Finally, that there was going to be no athletic events with, with uh, admissions and then also campers at Eversol this year. So we uh, recognize that reduction in those revenue projections. Uh, at the state level, we had some increases in the MIPSers, which is the section 147 that helps uh, offset the retirement uh. Uh, costs for the district for payroll and all that. Um, some heavy reduction, which was has to do with special ed funding through the state. And then also some small state aid funding uh, increases. And then uh, special ed in general on the ISD side. Uh, we had some recognition of the increase in taxes and part of that has to do with the heavily uh, rollback uh, levy that they passed last year. Um, then also some reductions to revenue for transportation tuition. The main part of that is transportation. As obviously there's not as much transportation going on, so they adjusted to their budget, which means uh, less revenue reimbursement for us through them. Um, then also some of the medicated outreach for special ed. Uh, so overall revenue reduction of about 486,000. Uh, on the expenditure side, the adjustments were mainly also recognizing then less expense in the special ed transportation on the expense side. And also general um, education transportation, just over 2 million. Uh, and also some staffing savings or open positions that are recognizing throughout the year. Then some also some reductions, you know, uh, we just put program and departmental reductions. There's a lot that goes into that. Um, you know, 10,000 here, 20,000 there for programs and things that weren't going to occur or expenses that were not going to happen this year. So overall reduction in expenditures of about 2.9 million uh, uh, for this year. So uh, just to kind of have that in a short little overview, um, again, our fund balance going from the fund amendment one or uh, amendment one. 10 and a half million and then the decrease in revenue. And then also decreasing uh, expenditures, what turned into savings, so about two and a half million. To add to our fund balance projected for the end of the school year. So right now looking at just under 13 million in uh, the expenditures. Or uh, fund balance, excuse me. And again, there it is just for the uh. Summary. And then just as a reminder, we'll bring a fi- final budget amendment in June that will show, you know, a difference and. Hopefully we'll have some of the S R funds that will be able to reflect in there that can help out our fund balance and. And um, uh, boost that up for going into next year. And uh, get us more set for the end of the school year. And and that is it. Seven sides, quick and easy.
But Mrs. Willis?
Questions.
Thank you. I'm gonna try to keep it, not get us too far in the weeds because moral of the story is we are not decreasing our fund balance and we're not increasing expenditures, which is good. However, if we could go back to the slide about revenue changes. Mr. Ling, I I struggled following your explanation for the heavily reduction in the transportation. And tuition reduction. Can you just explain those to us again, please?
Sure. And actually, Kim, if you want to explain more too, but um, I have her on. She's more the expert on. The weeds of the uh, state revenue and how that affects us.
Unfortunately, this will not be as moving as the previous presentation. The heavily reduction occurs because we file our final report for special ed and then the state makes adjustments to our state aid. So we had a $310,000 reduction based upon last year's expenses. Um, and I'm sorry, your other question was?
On the transportation and tuition under special ed.
So we record um, quarterly our transportation expenses based upon the claim that we receive from the ISD. And as John said, our special ed transportation has decreased. So therefore we. Reduce our revenues and we also reduce our expenses. So the next slide, I think you saw um, GE and special ed transportation and tuition reductions. In a perfect world, the two would equal. So if you had a $541,000 increase or decrease. On one side, you would have the same on the other. But in this case, we also had reductions for general ed special, um, general ed transportation. And so that's why we have 2 million here rather than the five. Sorry, Jen, what was the one before? 541? Nope. 531.
701.
701. Geez, goodness gracious.
Anything else, Mrs. Willis? Rachel, anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay. Any other questions from board members? Would anyone like to make a motion? Oh, um, I think I heard Dr. Rodriguez.
No, what, what, Mrs. Willis? Okay, I moved the, the board of education approved the budget amendment number two.
Support. It's been moved by Dr. Rodriguez, supported by Mrs. Lilji. Any questions or discussion? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Ms. Hodgins? Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Lilji?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis? Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you so much. Thank you, John and Kim.
Thank you.
Moving right along to report from the superintendent. Sam, back to you.
Thank you, uh, John and Kim. Thanks. Thanks so much. And the amount of work that you and your staff do and it is much appreciated. But um, I want to just very, very short superintendent's report tonight. Welcome back from spring break. I hope that everyone took some time for themselves and relaxed. The equity audit team had the first meeting with West Ed today, but I'm not going to spoil it because I'm sure Vice President Willis will talk about it during committee reports. Uh, bond and sinking fund work is continuing. You will hear more about this when an update will, will be presented to the board in May. Uh, I want to thank the COVID coordination team for their outstanding work with their presentation and the outstanding work they've done all year. Uh, I also want to give a big thanks to Kelly and Justin for the update on the pathway promise. Uh, it's amazing. And I, and I agree with Mrs. Lawrence, the video uh, video was just the topper for it. Lastly, once again, thanks to John and Kim for the budget amendment presentations. Now. Because in honor of the budget amendment and all the numbers you saw in Justin's case, all of our. Now, because in honor of the budget amendment and all the numbers you saw in Justin's case, all of our did you knows are filled with numbers tonight. So we will start out, yes, just for you, John, start out with Mr. Keck.
Good evening. Did you know that this year bilingual education had 386 interpretation requests for parent meetings, IEPs, and home visits? Bilingual assistants made 1,140 direct phone calls in native languages and 3,395 translated robocalls when out, all to support the 2,041 bilingual and 1,695 English learners, students in the district who speak 59 languages and come from 73 countries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keck, for that wide array of numbers. Ms. Corbin?
Thank you and good evening. Did you know that the Lansing School District will be celebrating 178 staff members for their 2,971 combined years of service? Thank you to all of our staff for all they do for us on a daily basis. Look for them in our next bright side.
And Mrs. Lawrence, the 2,000 is not my number of years. Just before you have to say something. Mr. Lang?
Good evening again. Did you know since March 16th, 2020, through the end of spring break this past week, the Lansing School District's Nexomagic Food Service has distributed 2,48,626 meals to the Lansing community. During this 388-day period, there has only been four days meals were not able to be served. On average, that's 5,335 meals per day. Included with these meals was over 142,000 pounds of fresh produce provided to the community using the USDA Farmers to Families Program. Thank you.
Ms. Black?
John, can you repeat the total number of meals, please?
2 million, yes. 2,48,626.
Wow. Ms. Black?
Okay.
You're up.
Did you, did you know my did you know was already discussed this evening? It was about the antigen testing. So I'm going to just let you know that we've had, I'll repeat. We've had 152 antigen tests administered to our student athletes. We will continue to do this work. It is, those tests are administered by our sparrow, athletic trainers and our school nurses. And so once again, this, this is an additional measure to keep our student athletes safe. And it's a quick, rapid way for us to get students the, the medical attention that they need if tested or, yeah, tested positive. So that's it for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Diaz?
Good evening, Lansing community. Did you know that the Lansing School District has successfully submitted for the Federal Arts and Education Assistance Grant? If Lansing is awarded the grant, it would provide 750,000 per year for three years to support arts programming across the grades K-12. This grant includes partnerships with LCC, the Wharton Center, and MSU's Broad Museum. Stay tuned for updates on this grant in the future. Thank you.
President Lawrence, that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you so much. I never thought I would like numbers. Still don't, but those were pretty cool ones to hear tonight. Moving on to routine matters and old business this evening. First up is the Facilities Committee Report. Mr. Lopez?
The report I have is that we will have a meeting tomorrow, Facilities Committee. And we'll bring whatever action the committee makes at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. How about Promise Committee?
Well, my Promise Report was done by Kelly Dean and, and Mr. Sheehan. You know, when I first, when we first presented this kind of presentations to the Promise Board, I says, you know, he has to go to the board. And he has to let, we have to let the community know what's going on with the Promise in this way. It's very effective and I'm certainly happy that we finally got him on, on, on the schedule of our board meetings. Because I think we should, we should have him on and off at least twice a year to come and just update us in that kind of a way. Even though we bring a report on a monthly or bimonthly basis, I think it's important for, for all of us and certainly the community to know what is really happening, you know, with the nuts and bolts of the Promise and, and all that it entails. So thank you very much, Kelly Dean and Justin Sheehan for providing that great presentation. I'm happy you were here. That's my report, Madam Chair. President.
Lopez, thank you. Equity Committee, Mrs. Willis?
Thank you. The Equity Committee had our meeting today, our launch meeting with West Ed and representatives from the School District and Equity Committee. I actually unfortunately wasn't able to stay for the entire meeting today. But we do have Mr. Lopez and Mrs. Sinicopie who were present in the meeting. I haven't had not, have not had an opportunity to follow up on next steps leaving that meeting. But I certainly would open the floor to Mr. Lopez and Mrs. Sinicopie if they have any pertinent updates to share. I believe Dr. Burrows was present for a portion of the meeting as well.
Well, I'll just tell you that I also joined late. So I was able to join one of the breakout sessions for questions seven and eight. And let's see, who was there? Two principals were there, myself and, and Dr., oh my God, this is a free spring. Beverly, Dr. Beverly. Well, no, he's a, he's a big red. No, but it was really interesting and I think that they learned, at least from the breakouts. What I heard him say, they would take that information out and then start, you know, formulating next steps with certainly President, Committee Chair Willis. So in a nutshell, that's what I heard. Sam?
Yeah, that's, I, the only thing I would add is that we did break out into, we did do four breakout rooms. We went over eight questions that are important, the things that they want to ask throughout their time that they're doing their audit. And our next meeting was not, was not scheduled yet, but we will be hearing from them scheduling whatever, scheduling something next, what our next steps are. And the next steps are to gather data more than anything else right now.
Yeah, and thank you for that. And Mr. Lopez, you didn't only get questions seven and eight. That was, those are the questions that were assigned to that group. So you didn't miss, like you missed the first six questions, so you're good. We, it was a very robust meeting where we did some level setting and they have an excellent diverse talent pool that is assigned to us to do the equity audit work. And so I'm really looking forward to now that we have established the focus areas for the, the focus areas for the audit. Now we're going to start digging in and doing the work.
If I may, Ms. Lewis?
Sure.
You know, as we were talking about the questions that we discussed in the, in the breakouts and so on and so forth. I think we need to emphasize, you know, to all our staff, parents, students, that we need to really take this to heart and be honest in our work in this matter, you know. Because if we're not honest, you know, we're going to miss out. So we need to be honest in order to really make change that we want to see for all our students and for the benefit of our students. So that's one thing that I think we spoke at our breakout session and I think it's a general, that's my general feeling, you know. That as we undertake this work, that staff and students and community, we need to be honest, you know, in our feedback and so on and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. ISOA report from Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. Due to the spring break, no schools, we didn't meet in the April. Then our next meeting will be in May. I had, I had the other presentation about the Policy Committee.
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you. The Policy Committee met yesterday to go over the spring update from NEOLA. We received very policies with changes. And the changes change because the legislators do many changes in their, in their places over there in the Capitol. The meeting was very productive and the board members, they are there, the two ladies, board member, they had great questions. They know, and I think that we will present to you in the next few weeks more the thirty policies. But also I want the NEOLA at least for 10, 15 minutes or 20 minutes to give the whole board a presentation of some of these new policies. They are so important and every board member should, I know that we read them, but also to review together. The Policy Committee will bring the, to you as soon as possible, all of them. I am glad to hear that the superintendent said that all his years they had been in the policy meetings, this meeting was one of the best. He wrote that to us and then thank you. And I think that we are in good hands. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thanks, Dr. Rodriguez. Next on our agenda is our consent agenda. Our consent agenda this evening includes the approval of the August, April 1st, regular board meeting minutes and receipt and approval of the Treasurers Report for March. May I have a motion? May I have a?
Madam President?
Mrs. Lilge?
I moved that the Board of Education approved the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been moved by Mrs. Lilge, supported by Dr. Burrows. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda this evening?
We're going to get our Treasurers update?
No.
No.
Yes, Dr. Burrows, go ahead.
Thank you. I'll go through this very briefly. Since we went through some of the budget information already this evening, the beginning cash investment balance was about 24 million, where the receipt did 11 million and disbursement at 14. The ending general fund cash investment balance on March 31st was 21 million. This is 4.7 million higher than it was the same time last year. We received donations from the Capital Area United Way for the, for the RIF and for Eversol. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Burrows. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodgson? Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mrs. Lilge?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to action items. The only action item we have this evening, only new business item, I should say, is a discussion of our superintendent evaluation this evening. We have been, it's been requested that we conduct that conversation in closed session. With that said, can I have a motion?
Madam President?
Mrs. Willis?
I moved that the Board of Education recessed into closed session to discuss personal matters as permissible under Section 8A of the Open Meetings Act.
Support.
It's been moved by Mrs. Willis, supported by Dr. Rodriguez. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodgson? Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mrs. Lilge?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, everyone. We are in closed session. Okay, all board members are back and accounted for. Dr. Rodriguez, report from Secretary.
Thank you, Madam President. The Big God Meeting Parents Community Advisory Council, free of charge, online via 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. See the Lansing School District website for the Zoom link. When that is Tuesday, April 20th. Wednesday, April 21st, 2021, Sexual Education Advisory Board from 8:30 AM to 11:30 AM. See the Lansing Zoom link and more for more details. Wednesday, April 28th, 2021, Parents University, Avoiding Power Struggle with Kids. 5:30 PM to 6:30 PM. See Lansing School District website for Zoom link and more details. I do know how when is our next board meeting, I think will be next Thursday?
That'll be May 6th.
Okay, then.
No meeting next week.
No meeting in April. We will meet in better weather in May 6th. Thank you.
Any board member comments this evening?
I do have a comment, Madam President.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Thanks. I'll keep it short. I'd like to report, I've met with Kelly Reed from the employee, from the LAES Secretaries Employee Group. And she wanted me to let the board know that their group is really appreciative of us keeping them safe. And they wanted to thank us for all that we do and that's it. So I told her I would relay that message. So I am proud to be a part of this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. Any other board comments for this evening? Okay, everybody get your vaccine, wear your mask and we'll see you May 6th.
May 6th, thank you.
We are adjourned at 8:24. Thank you.